Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to a close in Rockingham County Board of Commissioners for September the 3rd. We work from a prepared agenda. We're going to start tonight with the invocation. I didn't get an opportunity to meet him out in the crowd. Is Pastor Chris Burns, did he make it here?
He's here.
He's here, okay. The invocation is going to be presented by Pastor Chris Burns from Draper Pentecostal Holiness Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be done by Ms. Sophie Lucas. So if you would stand with me for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. You have blessed us so tremendously, and Lord, we just thank you for that, Lord. And Father, Lord, I pray for your blessings upon each one that is here today. Lord, each Commissioner that is here, Lord, I pray for you to give wisdom to. Your word says that if we lack wisdom, Lord, that we can ask of you, and that you would give it to us liberally. And so tonight, Lord, we ask for that wisdom. Lord, you know what the business is before us. You know what needs to happen, Lord, and we just ask that you give us the wisdom that is needed. Father, Lord, I also ask that you bring in the businesses to our accounting. Lord, it's a beautiful place, and Lord, we just ask that you bring in the revenue and the businesses, Lord, that needs to be here, Father. And Father, Lord, I pray for each citizen in our accounting, Lord, that you keep us safe, Lord, that you keep us from harm. And Father, Lord, we pray also as your Son prayed, that your will be done in heaven and on earth, Lord Jesus. And we thank you. We pray these things in your Son's wonderful and holy and awesome name, Jesus. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the September the 3rd, 2019 meeting agenda.
Make a motion for approval.
I had a motion for approval. I think we need to add one item. We need to add the, under the closed session, we need to add also that we will be discussing location and expansion of the industry.
Oh, me and mine.
Well, and I think also attorney-client privilege and economic development.
Yes.
I think we need to add all of those.
Yeah, add all of that. So move, Mr. Chair.
10A.
Under 12.
Also a new business item.
We have, under new business, we have a 10A, discuss the requested budget for 2019 municipal elections. Would you add that into your motion?
Sure, I'll add it to my motion.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I'd like to second the much amended motion.
We certainly saved on ink on this one, didn't we?
Could you please turn the volume up? It's almost a little hard again.
I don't know how to do that.
Are the mics live? Are they? The mics are live.
You've just got to pull them to your mouth a little bit.
How about now?
It's a little better.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is recognitions. Gentlemen, if I get you to join me down front, we're going to recognize Mr. Jeff Smith and Mr. Robert Majerik. I'll get Jeff and Robert to come forward. Oh, you've got to come on, we're around. You're doing a fine job so far. I'm going to get you all to stand right here, and I'm going to talk about you for just a minute. We're recognizing Mr. Robert Majerik and Mr. Jeff Smith for outstanding volunteers for the month of September. It was nominated by Ms. Stacy Burns, Center Director for the Betsy Jeff Penn 4-H Center. The Betsy Jeff Penn 4-H Center has been providing summer camps and overnight field trip experiences in Rockingham County for the past 55 years. During 2019, Hurricane Michael caused severe flooding, road washouts, and substantial tree damage at the Betsy Jeff Penn 4-H Center. Without the resources, time, and expertise from Mr. Jeff Smith, Mr. Robert Majerik, the 4-H, the Penn 4-H Center would have been closed during the fall season of 2019. Mr. Robert Majerik spent countless hours using his equipment and professional expertise to help the 4-H Center rebuild from the devastating storms. His quick thinking and extensive knowledge base is what makes him such an outstanding volunteer. Mr. Jeff Smith is a lifelong member of the Penn 4-H Center family, and since childhood, he has dedicated his time and energy into assuring the success of the center. The contributions he has made throughout the years is directly reflected in the success of the center and the 8,000 children it serves annually. As outstanding Rockingham County volunteers, Mr. Majerik and Mr. Smith both donated hundreds of volunteer hours and repaired the facility daily to create a safe pockets of camp allowing the children to return to the field trips and the summer camps. So on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you, and we recognize you for your service to the community. It is outstanding volunteer for Mr. Jeff Smith for dedication to the community and the citizens of Rockingham County. Signed, Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, this date September 3rd, 2019. Thank you very much, sir. And the second one is for Mr. Majerik, outstanding volunteer for dedicated service to the community and the citizens of Rockingham County. Signed, Board of Commissioners, this date September 3rd, 2019. Thank you very much, sir. All right. We're going to take a few pictures, and we're going to put you all right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Congratulations.
Is anything either one of you gentlemen would like to say? You both have mic time right now.
Not really.
Robert, anything you'd like?
Well, we just appreciate the recognition out of it, but we really didn't need to be recognized at all because it was, Jeff kind of coerced me into this once we got started. It was actually a lot of fun, and the problem is now that we got everything straightened out, the day after we straightened it out, another storm come through and had to close some of the trails that we had just opened up. So we're going to go back here shortly and get our equipment back in there and do some more when I get Jeff back away from Smith Mountain Lake.
But I'm working up there.
That's what he says.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
for September 14th through 28th, 2019. I'll ask our county manager to read the proclamation.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The North Carolina Department of Transportation organizes two annual statewide litter sweep events to work toward the goal of clean and beautiful roads. Additionally, the focus of these campaigns is to motivate groups and individuals to clean litter from along the sides and to discourage the practice of littering resulting in a cleaner Rockingham County, therefore a cleaner North Carolina. Whereas the natural beauty of our county and state, as well as a clean environment, are sources of pride for all citizens, attracting tourists, and aiding in recruiting new industries. And whereas the cleanup will improve the aesthetics of Rockingham County, increase awareness of the need for cleaner roads, and emphasize the importance of not littering. And whereas the cleanup scheduled for September the 14th through September the 28th, 2019, will unite adoptive highway volunteers, Department of Correction inmates, and community service workers, and North Carolina Department of Transportation employees. North Carolina DOT also encourages local governments and committees, civic and professional organization, businesses, churches, schools, families, and individual citizens to participate by furnishing cleanup materials and disposal. And whereas North Carolina Department of Transportation will provide pickup of collected trash, tires, and other abandoned items and transport them to the Rockingham County landfill, NC DOT shall be exempt from landfill tipping charges for disposal of such items for September 16th through September 30th, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners at September 14th through September 28th of 2019 as hereby proclaimed Rockingham County Fall Litter Sweep, this day, the third day of September, 2019. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentleman, item number six is our consent agenda. These are non-controversial items you've had an opportunity to review for the last week. Are there any questions or concerns on the consent agenda? Move for approval of the consent agenda.
A second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven is our public comment. Before the comments begin, I'm going to ask our county manager to read our comment disclaimer.
Okay. Mr. Chair, public comment shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to discuss any items on the agenda or of county operations. It shall not serve as a forum for debate nor discussion with the Board of County Commissioners. Any speaker who wishes to speak must sign up to do so before the meeting starts on the appropriate sign-up sheet located at the table outside at the entrance. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the county commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairman shall open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she reaches the podium. Any speaker desiring to speak shall be allotted three minutes. Speakers shall be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic as long as the individual signed up to speak prior to the meeting or during the meeting alerts the chairperson. The county manager will keep the time of the speakers and notify the chairman of their limit. The time clock will start with three minutes and less yielded time to six minutes. When the time remaining reaches one minute, you will hear a beep to alert you that your time is about to expire and that you will need to wrap up your comments. Speakers appearing before the Board of County Commissioners will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which when directed at a public official is not related to his or her official capacities. The Board of County Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office. Mr. Chair.
We might have to put you on the clock reading that.
I wouldn't laugh.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. We have one person signed up to speak tonight, and I'd like Mark T. to come forward. And Mark, I'm going to let you pronounce your last name, and everyone in the audience will understand why I didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Teljeski. I'm pastor of Living Faith Communities Church. I actually know some of you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight, and I'm excited to be able to invite all of you to that all may know, it is a revival downtown Reedsville. Oh, I didn't say my address, I'm sorry. 2640 North Carolina Highway 14. I am a Rockingham resident. I want to invite you to this revival down in the Market Square in Reedsville. A couple of years ago, one of our members, Candace Trizaki, had the vision for sharing the love of Jesus Christ and the love of the church, not just in Reedsville, in our small little area, but throughout the county. And we've taken one step last year, and we had revivalists come in, and I spoke, and this year we've got six different churches involved directly and many other churches on the side, and next year we want to take it countywide. Our goal is to make good citizens for you all by bringing them to Christ and training them up and to obey everything that Christ taught us to do. The two dates are September 6th and September 7th. The 6th is this Friday, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. It's a free event. You're welcome to come. I have some invite cards for you. Please invite anyone that you feel led to. We're giving away clothing. We're also giving away food. There's a free hot dog supper, so we'll feed you two. We have some wonderful musical groups lined up. Candace has been working very hard both days, and so a number of different types of music, and I think you'll be really moved and challenged by both the words and the music of these groups. It also goes on September 7th, that's from 3:00 to 10:00. And there's free clothing giveaway also on Saturday. It's at Market Square on Scale Street, so you need to bring a lawn chair, and just an open heart for what the Lord might have for you. Like I said, we want to take this countywide next year. It's growing. More churches have come on board and said, "How can we get involved?" And we want to make it seven days, and they said, "That's great. Let us know, and we'll get planning next January." So we just wanted to make you aware of that and offer an invite to you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mabel, is this something that is on our community calendar so that the folks that look at our community calendar? Thank you. All righty, that is the only person signed up to speak. Item number eight, Mr. Ronnie Tate, Director of Engineering and Public Utilities.
Good evening, gentlemen. At the meeting a few weeks ago in Madison, the board had asked that staff take a look at some of the contents of the water and sewer policy and see if there were some updates that were needed to that policy. And so what I bring to you tonight is a review of that policy and going through and updating it, changing some language and things like that. So the current water and sewer policy was last updated in 2016. The updates that I have before you tonight, there were some typos in there, some change to some regulatory agencies, removal of some restrictions on developments and developers, and hopefully this will help promote economic growth in the county. There are some, what I listed as minor changes to the policy, there were several places in there where deener was listed, and that's now DEQ. I changed those.
Ronnie, hold on for one second. Mr. Chair, these things should be on. He's got a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll turn these on.
They're not working.
Oh, they're not?
So each Commissioner has copies.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. So we changed deener to DEQ. There were some typos and some words that were in there that were not needed. The language change for the fees, there are several places where it lists a fee of, say for example, $25, and we're proposing to change that to read a fee of $25 or the currently listed fee in the Rockingham County Master Fee Schedule. And also, there are several areas where the policy designates that things go directly to the county manager, and I would like to add for that to read to the county manager or their designee. And these are things like approval of water taps, approval of sewer taps, those types of things that are typically things that I've already, always been doing since I've been here, but in the policy it had it listed going to the county manager for their approval. There are three major updates that I have in here. The first one is the removal of the language allowing for appeal of water termination services to the county manager. So in the policy now as it is, there is a fairly long appeal process for customers who are having their service suspended, and we're asking to remove that language. And the reason for suspension, you'll see on the next page, which is, and this has always been in the policy here, service suspension violations, non-payment of water charges, fraudulent use of water, unauthorized reconnection of discontinued service, unlawful use of bypass, existence of cross-connection, failure to maintain plumbing or abide by the plumbing code, violations of regulations related to sprinkler connections, and the existence of any other condition detrimental to the water system or the public health and safety. And so those violations have always been in there, but if we were going to disconnect somebody's service, as I said, there was a lengthy appeals process that could drag on for several weeks or months if somebody wanted to do that. So we're asking for those to be removed out of the policy. The second major update is to backflow, cross-connection, and back siphonage language. This change will make the owner responsible for installing any of those devices needed to prevent contamination, make the owner responsible for testing these devices as scheduled and as required by NC DEQ, and to report those testing results back to the county. That particular one probably applies more to residential and to people with sprinkler systems. Commercial development, about any commercial development is going to come from an architect or an engineer, and it will have the backflow device designed into it. And this one is for people with sprinkler systems and to prevent cross-connection, excuse me, into our system. And the third update is a change that was specifically asked for in the wording for water extensions as supplied to new developments. The change we're proposing would make the owner or developer responsible for installation of water and sewer infrastructure inside the subdivision. This would include the lines, valves, taps, hydrants, and any other equipment needed for the service. And it also removes the language requiring developers to follow the same bidding and contract regulations that the county is required to follow. And at the Madison meeting, I think there was a question about, are those, were those requirements in there? And they are in the current policy, and we're asking them to take them out. That's all the questions, I mean, all the changes I have for the water portion. Do you want to ask questions now, or you want me to get through the sewer part, or?
Well, so...
Mr. Burger.
The policy that we were sent, parts in red, parts in black.
Right.
Which part are the changes?
The parts in red.
Okay.
But that, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hall.
If you're not, if you're done. You specifically mentioned this list of things that you read off earlier, I'm trying to go back, of, you know, non-payment of water charges, fraudulent use of water.
Yes, sir.
That list. You said that all of those had been in the policy the whole time, but yet in the packet that read, so that's why we're confused.
Okay. So what I did for these is, that one section related to, the original header of that section said, "The county required to give notice before terminating service, procedure for appeal, and a hearing by county manager." And so I proposed a change in that to rename that section, County Water Termination and Rockingham County Water Leak Policy. And so what I did is, what I'm proposing to do is take that whole section out and replace it with what you see in red here.
Mr. Chair. All right, so is there anything else in there that you deleted, other than what you just read?
Just the part about the appeal to the county manager. That's the only part that got deleted.
That's the only thing in that section 15-1?
Yes, sir.
That you're taking out?
Yeah.
What, I think, excuse me just one second. Lawyer has something to say.
Yes, gentlemen, I believe that one question I'd have with that edit, as far as service suspension violations is a due process issue. I think that if there's a violation, there would need to be an avenue. I believe that the appeals process was in place in order to give the citizens a platform to be able to present their case.
Which is what was removed.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, have you reviewed this prior to tonight?
Yes, Mr. Hall have, yes.
Okay.
Can I add something? The violations, several of those are related to public health and safety, and I'm not sure, we want to stop those as quick as we find them, because we have a cross-connection or back siphonage or backflow problem, they need to be stopped immediately. They need to be disconnected immediately. Because those types of things, if they get back into our system and contaminate our water system, it's, that's not a good thing. We just can't have that happen. So, that's...
And I think it's, if it's a public health concern, I absolutely understand what you're saying, but I don't necessarily think that what our county attorney is saying is necessarily in conflict with that.
Okay.
Because I think it can be stopped until it's heard and then a decision made to allow it or not to allow it. My biggest concern about what I read is, I think with any ordinance, and this is directed to you, Mr. Metzler, when we get an ordinance like this, I think it would be easier, at least for me, if when us, to have the ordinance as written as it is, strike out what is being removed and what is being added, have text in a different color. That way, it's, because you saw what you removed, but we're not seeing it unless we hold both documents in front of us and read each document word for word.
Okay.
And it makes it difficult for us when we are sitting here, and I think that's the point Commissioner Hall was alluding to.
It is.
Okay, Commissioner Burger.
Anywhere we made the change to say a fee of $25 or the currently listed fee, if we could just take out the fee of $25 and just have it as the currently listed fee, I think that clarifies what the fee would be, just go to the fee schedule.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's, the question is, who's setting the fee, the 25 or the fee that's listed? And then, one of the changes that you've got has to do with leaks, water leaks?
I don't think we made a change to the leak adjustment.
Well, that's red.
But it's the same as it was in the original policy. I just rewrote that whole section.
All right, well, so what I understand from this, I've got a question for Lance or you, as far as what we're paying for water from the town of Madison or from Reedsville, are we able to get a discount if there's a leak? Because we're paying for the water, then turn around and selling it.
No, not that I'm aware of.
No.
Okay, but the policy gives a discount for a leak, so we're just, in our policy, we're having the taxpayers foot the bill for the loss.
Currently.
Okay.
And that was, that was in the policy before I got here. It's been in policy, I assume, since it was originated.
I guess if, this being an enterprise fund, we've got to run it like a business, and if our cost is not adjusted, I'm not sure how our revenues are adjusted and we're making a profit.
We're not...
Well, exactly, we're not making a profit.
Administrative, we'd be glad to remove any adjustments. Yes.
So I mean, we don't have the ability to go to Dan River or the city of Reedsville and make the request for them that, you know, the customer came to us, there was a leak, we just eat the expense?
Currently.
Okay.
We've requested that in the past, and each time it's been denied.
Commissioner Travis.
Now, you are talking about before a meter, right?
No, sir.
So it's on the backside of the meter, the homeowner's side of the meter?
Yes.
Dan River and all other water companies, if it's on the customer's side of that meter, they are responsible for that leak.
Right, but it's policy.
They don't get no reimbursement, don't get no reduce of charges.
Right, but our policy...
So that's what you're talking about.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, is, so if a customer has a leak, they are paying for treated water, and we are paying for treated water from those sources.
Right.
And then we're giving the break to the customer, but we're not getting that break.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Kevin, because I just got through doing this, I had to pay 300 and some dollars to Dan River, and they wouldn't reduce my bill, so...
Well, I think part of the problem, or part of my concern is, is that we... Well, I think part of the problem, a part of my concern is, is that we have a water enterprise fund that we have to subsidize from the general fund to a tune of over $700,000. So we're not close to even breaking even in that enterprise fund. And when we are doing a leak compensation for the leak to the homeowner, that's essentially coming out of that $700,000.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was...
We're going to change that policy?
Well, I think Commissioner Richardson had a comment, and I'm sorry I stepped in front of you.
No, it's okay. We paid a considerable amount for water that was dumped on the ground out near the jail to Dan River.
Mm-hmm.
And it was entirely their fault that the water, am I correct, Mr. Duncan, that it was entirely their fault that the water was leaking because of some things they'd done? And we were, we got no consideration at all for them, so I think there's some virtue, whether you agree or disagree with the policy, of having the same policy countywide, so it can be anticipated. Just a couple of quick questions. Item H under service suspension, where it talks about existence of other conditions detrimental to the water system or public health or safety, who determines that?
That would be, typically, something like that is reported to me by one of our water or sewer techs if they observe something like that, and then I make a decision. If it's something I feel like the county manager needs to know about...
County personnel is the answer.
Yes, sir.
I might mention, having gone through this in another jurisdiction, that the changes you asked for on the backflow and the cross and so forth, that's the way it is everywhere. I've had to buy that service, and so that is consistent.
Yeah.
And your other major change, where you're holding the owner developer responsible for installation, who checks that they're up to code, so to speak?
Okay, so typically, when we get plans for subdivision like that, one of the first thing it does, it comes to Kerry's office, and it goes, they review it, then it goes through technical review committee, which I'm a member of, utilities are a member of. So we, I'll sit there as a group with the developer or the engineer, review those drawings. If we get something like that, I also send the drawings to my water and sewer techs to review, and I send it to Bill Lester to review. So once we get all those comments back and the development moves forward, whoever the engineer of record is, is the one inspecting that when it's being put in place. And then he is the one that certifies to the state of North Carolina that that system was installed per the drawings, and that it meets the standards of not only the county but of North Carolina. And then the state comes in and certifies the system ready for potable water.
So that means ultimately, our contracted water expert is the one that checks to make sure it's done right?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Berger.
Also, in this policy, I know you haven't gotten all the way to the sewer part, but it's got adjustments to sewer bills are not allowed under this policy. And similar to, we're paying for treated water, and therefore we should pass that on, if it's a leak, then the parts of the county that we're under contract with sewer, it's not going through the system. Is there, how are we being billed from a sewer standpoint, from those that are servicing the sewer lines?
Okay, so when we, since we have a purchase-only system, what we do is our techs read our meters, our water meters, along with reading Dan River's meters for customers that are sewer-only customers but have Dan River water. We have a few customers that are flat rate, that have well water but have a sewer system. So our techs are reading those meters. We report those meters to, those readings, those totals to the city of Readsville when we purchase city, town of Madison for water and sewer, and we report them to the city of Eden for treatment. So whatever that reading is, is what gets reported as far as wastewater treatment. So whether that water got a leak dumped on the ground or leaked into a sink, into a drain, we don't know that. So it's water in, it's water out, is the way we see it.
Well, do those sources that we have have a process for the sewer bill if there's a leak?
The answer's the same. We've requested that before from the towns, and they've said no.
Okay, because in Maedan, what we've done for a number of years is, no breaks on the water because it's been treated. You can have a break on the sewer if you can prove that it was a leak, and they'll forgive the sewer. And then, as far as the payment for whatever that bill is, because sometimes it is fairly substantial, the council will, well, first it goes to the manager, then they can appeal to the council. But the council has routinely allowed for, and the manager as well, a period of time for them to make payments interest-free to catch those things up. Because sometimes those bills can be pretty substantial when it's a leak.
Sure.
So if we could confirm that that policy's in place for the sewer, because I know Maedan treats sewer, I know we get it through Madison, but if we can figure out what the policy is countywide, and see if we can make those adjustments, if the council's okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
And I know some municipalities suggest both, water and sewer, do an adjustment for leakage on both of them.
Yeah.
And because obvious reasons. What's your next topic, Ronnie, you was going to talk about?
Oh, yeah, it's the sewer policy updates. So again, there's some minor updates in it, and it's changing DNR to DEQ. The fee listing is we talked about earlier, and I think this is one that got brought up about the supervision of work on owners' property. We're requesting that to be changed to, it had to be supervised by my position, we're asking that to be changed to supervised by the engineer of record for the project, because there's one ultimately certifying it to the state. And the one major update change is to the removal of the language requiring developers and owners to follow the same bidding and contract regulations as the county, we're asking that to be taken out. And those are the only changes to the sewer policy.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Would, can I ask, would it be helpful for the board if I brought this back with the language like you asked for? Would that be better?
That's where I was going, but I was going to let Commissioner Hall ask his question.
Okay, all right.
It would make, well, my question is on the sewer policy updates. Have you talked with any engineers in this position to discuss with them about them supervising this?
It's, no, I haven't, but it's pretty standard, what we see when we get plans for review like that in subdivisions, it's, that's the way their, their engineers the ones certifying it. We don't certify it, nor does Bill Lester certify it for us, unless it's our system. So it's up to them to have an engineer in place to certify.
So they're responsible for it in the end anyway?
Yes, sir.
All we're doing is formalizing it into the policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
To answer your question earlier, I would very much appreciate it, because I'm still confused about some of our changes.
Okay.
As long as you guys don't mind seeing a lot of documents, I'm fine with it.
Yeah. Mr. Metzler.
Just to make it clear about what the direction is, to do that and modify, but what about the water and sewer adjustment policy? How do you want us to handle that?
We hadn't got that far yet. Yes, I would, I would be very interested in the changes, but I'd also, excuse me, like for you to talk with our attorney and bring to us a, something that our council feels comfortable with, that there will be an appeal process there, that it can be timely, meet the needs of public safety or public health, and yet have some type of resolution to, or appeal process for the customer. Something along the lines of a stay pending an appeal. That's exactly right, something of that nature that can be incorporated. And before we direct them back, is there any more comments on the leakage concerns? Is it the board's, would the board like for them to revisit that in the policy, to give us proposed changes in that language?
I would, with it being an enterprise fund and us losing money to the tune of a penny on the tax rate annually in that fund.
And I talked to Ronnie earlier, and I'm thinking, Ronnie, you share with the commissioners, how many do you think you had last year where you had...
It was five or less.
Five or less.
We've only had two so far this year, and one of them was a water leak, but they were asking, they were actually asking for a adjustment on the sewer, which we denied.
Okay.
Because it's the way it's written in the policy.
You're talking about a limited number, but...
Yes, sir.
But I think we, I do think, to be steward of the tax dollar, I think we need to look inward at this policy.
Exactly.
All right, so if we could, could, Mr. Manager, could you come back with us and with the policy and with those changes and with the discussion with the county attorney on the appeals process?
Would you also like us to look at Maedan, what they do with their sewer adjustment policy?
If I was working on it, I'd talk to Maedan, Madison, Eden, Readsville, see what, see what process they use. Some of it will be applicable. However, you know, keep in mind, we're still buying bulk, and they're water producers and sewer treaters, and we're not. Any other comments from the board?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the teen leadership council, and that will be Mr. Paul Mary and members of his, members of the council. It looks like it might just be members of the teen leadership account. Ladies, if you would, introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Caroline Roseman. I'm the interim chair of this council.
I'm Sophie Lewis. I'm the interim secretary of the council.
I'm Lucy Lewis.
I'm Lena Wilder.
And if you need to, you can adjust that mic down a little bit, so...
Okay.
I was going to change the PowerPoint.
We don't, where?
Yeah. Fix it.
And gentlemen, you should have a PowerPoint to, I'll print out for their PowerPoint.
Okay. So this past year, we had nine different members, three of them have left, so we have, we've had six different applicants being put in this year, and we have six new returning members this year. So, in this past year, we had our big project of improving mental health throughout Rockingham County schools. We formed a questionnaire consisting of 20 multiple-choice questions that were sent to Dr. Shotwell, and our goal for you this year is to have this questionnaire sent to all of the high school students in Rockingham County this school year in hopes to improve the mental health stability rate in the schools. And Dr. Shotwell has seen these questions, and he will soon be getting back to us about those. You guys want to add anything to that? Our mini project was gathering clothes to help with a fall or a winter clothing drive. So we began to gather clothes from all of the members in this council throughout the school year in hopes of beginning a clothing drive for the needy people in Rockingham County during the fall and winter seasons. And we already have some of the clothes, and our goal is to find the places to put boxes of clothes out so that those can take or drop off clothes for others in need. The Rockingham County Teen Leadership Council was able to volunteer at the UNC Rockingham Nursing Home throughout the 2018-2019 school year. We even did a winter project with the elderly, and that was during Valentine's Day. And our goal for this year is to volunteer more at other nursing homes, along with soup kitchens and in other elementary schools, to promote the council throughout Rockingham We also volunteered at the Rockingham County Teen Up to Cleanup event in March at Morehead High School, and we hope to be able to participate in more community cleanup activities such as the Adopt a Highways in the near future. And because Rockingham County Teen Leadership Council started this year, we were only able to participate in the Readsville Christmas Parade. However, our goals for this upcoming year also are including to participate in other local festivals and parades, including River Fest, fall festivals throughout the other elementary schools, and the winter parades held in Madison, Eden, and Readsville.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. Gentlemen, do we have any questions of our teen leadership council?
Yeah, I got a question.
Mr. Travis.
Hey, Caroline, question, you said you lost three members, are you having problems keeping people on your panel, or...
Well, two of them were seniors, and they graduated this year, and then one of our other peoples, they went to the School of Science and Math, so they moved away. But it would be good to be able to promote it throughout the schools, because not a lot of people still know about, like, what's going on in the council or what it is. So we've been trying to reach out to, like, some of the schools too, and see if they'll promote it throughout their schools announcements and things, to see if we can gain more members.
Now, just for the audience to know, are you looking for 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, or is it certain ages?
It's all high school members. You can be homeschooled or enrolled in any of the schools in Rockingham County.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richardson. Question, Commissioner Hall.
Oh, great job, great job.
We commend you.
Yeah.
No questions, we just commend you. It's a habit to be involved, and perhaps you don't think these issues are huge or are going to reach the scale of a hit line or something, but the practice will do you good, and you may very well save us from making mistakes. Adults don't usually make mistakes, you know that, but...
Yeah, thank you all for being here. You know, this is your county too, and I think it's important that the, through the Teen Leadership Council, that you take ownership in the decision-making, because we want you all to be a part of our community and be sitting up here around this, making the decisions that we're making in the future. I know Paul Mary's here, he's our liaison and kind of leads this effort. I also want to encourage you too, we've got Councilman Jim Burnett, I think I saw him earlier today, he and, he's here somewhere, I think, there he is. Jim kind of is, does the same thing, he's wanted to help start the Teen Leadership Council here in Eden. And I think if you maybe work together on some projects, Jim and I were talking earlier, it'd be nice if this became habit forming throughout the county and other municipalities joined in, and we get the youth involved collaboratively throughout the county, working together on some joint projects. So I know they've had a lot of success and are doing a lot of great things too, and appreciate what you guys do, and, you know, there's another resource for you to, maybe you all could reach out and make a difference and become infectious to the other schools so that they, and other municipalities, so that they create a youth council.
Right.
So, but thank you for what you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, under new business, gentlemen, you have the, let's see if we got a copy of it. Okay, we do. Got a copy of the, see if I got a copy of it. Yeah. It's tied. Under new business, discuss the requested budget for the 2019 municipal election. Gentlemen, we asked for and received a, an estimate of the municipal elections in 2019. It was a detailed report. I think we have a representative here from the Board of Elections, or a couple of representatives. Lance?
I talked to the chairman, Richardson, today. He had called, he's not in town, he's at the beach, and he said that Mr. Parrish was going to speak if there's any questions.
All right. Mr. Parrish, you want to come up? And gentlemen, have you got any questions? I might have should have said that first. Do we have any questions for Mr. Parrish? And thank you for being here before we get started, thank you for being here, Jeff.
Glad to be here.
Okay. Okay.
This may be more for Lance.
Okay.
So we get reimbursed by the cities for every bit of this.
Municipal, yes, sir.
Okay, and that money that we receive as a reimbursement goes into our general fund, does not go back to the Board of Elections.
No, it goes to our general fund.
Okay. That's all I've got for Lance. That's all I've got at this point.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but we do appreciate you. Do you happen to know what the cost to the taxpayer is to cast one vote?
I don't know. And my colleagues are here, maybe, do they know? They're giving me a yes or no? No? What, however, I think that's information I would easily get, and I'll make a note of what the questions that you're asking that I can't answer, and I'll get that, and I'll report that back to you.
I appreciate that. You understand, I'm just trying to get an idea.
Sure.
And I intend to compare that to other counties and precincts and so forth.
Mm-hmm. And tell me your question again, please.
What does it cost, what's the cost to the taxpayer, the Rockingham County taxpayer, to cast one vote in this county?
Okay.
You understand what I'm getting at?
I've got it, yes, sir. I wrote it down, and I will get a response and have, either I'll get back to you, or someone from the, the office will get back to that with you.
I trust you. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Reese, can you say something? You looked at us, but we were not as obvious as you are, so we would not be able to answer that question.
Alright, any other questions?
Well, I don't have any as far as what's presented tonight. I do know that during the budget process, we were given totals and asked questions, and I think some of those questions were answered with this sheet. And I'm just curious, since all that occurred during the budget process and we had totals, when we'll get a breakdown on the presidential primary? I'd like to have that by the first meeting the next month, since it was something as far as part of the budget process.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. I think you got some head nods on that, so.
Next month, the first meeting or the second meeting?
Where are we at the first meeting? I guess, are we on the road at that point, or are we?
First meeting, is that one Whitman?
We're Williamsburg.
Williamsburg, one of those meetings. October, 1st of October?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I mean, we ought to be able to get, breakdown should've been there during the budget process, but, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jeff, I guess one of the things that Lance shared with me, y'all, and I think he shared that Tina said, that y'all do send out an estimate to the municipalities of the anticipated cost.
That's correct.
To the, of the municipal elections. So this should, this should not catch anybody off guard. They should have an idea of worst, worst-case scenario when, for the November elections.
That's accurate, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I just, I do understand you can't estimate exactly how many votes will be cast, so we, I realize it's an approximation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for Mr. Parrish, but we, during the budget process, we set aside some money. Do we need to go ahead and appropriate this amount at this point in time?
You would have to. Did, did you provide them with the budget?
Amendment.
Amendment from Pat?
No.
You would have to move money from non-departmental into this to cover this. There's about 100, I think there was 116,000 set aside.
Well, yeah, I think it was 110 that was set aside.
This is 121.
Yeah.
21073.
Yeah, you would only set that part aside. The other, I guess, is what will be discussed for the presidential.
Right.
Could they bring this to us at the September, at the 16th?
When do we need to move the money?
I think we need to move it now. I mean, that's what Pat had recommended.
I need a motion to move 21,073 dollars from non-departmental to this specific account.
To their municipal elections.
To municipal elections.
So moved.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson.
I'll second that.
Amount requested, got them seconded by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is Commissioner Comments. We'll start to my left, Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna say thank you to the city of Eden for allowing us to be here tonight, and I appreciate everybody coming out and viewing it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I too'd like to thank the citizens that are here and the government of Eden for coming out. This is about as big a group as we ever get at one of these road tours, so thank you for coming. Since we last met, three of your commissioners represented you at the annual conference of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Pertle, and myself were there, and I think it was worthwhile use of county funds. And did anybody go besides you, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
But I think often there's a payback in that we learn things that save us money down the road or immediately. We also had an excellent representative for the, from the 4-H Clubs of Rockingham County, and hoping she'll be at the next meeting. We can introduce her. Also, a salute to the Women's Suffrage Movement tonight, specifically the League of Women Voters. I think we're gonna have a resolution or proclamation in a coming meeting, but the League of Women Voters is celebrating the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment's passage. So I want to take just a moment to recognize that notable event in our history, which gave American women the right to vote. So, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Berger?
Just thanks to the city of Eden for allowing us to be here tonight. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to come out and see what local government is about. Really appreciate the teen council and their involvement, so thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Again, I agree with the leadership. Thank you to the city of Eden. Appreciate the interim manager and the department heads over here. Appreciate the teen leadership council. I appreciate that presentation. So many times we're on boards and other councils around the county. We're looking around, everybody has gray hair or no hair, and it's nice to see young people getting involved, learning about leadership, because so many times we wonder where are the new leaders coming from? Guess what, guys, it's you. So we appreciate you. I'd also like to thank everyone else who's here in attendance tonight, the elected officials, as well as general public. Thank you for participation. We appreciate it. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. There's a few people I'd like to thank. Of course, the city of Eden for allowing us use of their facility tonight, and thank each one of you for coming out tonight. I'd also like to thank Roy Sawyers. Appreciate him being here tonight, so our meeting gets out to the, to the people of Rockingham County. Mayor Neville Hall was here earlier, and he had to step out, but I appreciate him being here. Seen Councilman Jim Burnett, thank you for being here from the city of Eden. Seen Councilman Sylvia Grogan, I could barely see her, she's sitting on the back row. I appreciate you being here. We got some elected officials of Board of Elections, Bonnie Purgerson, thank you, and Tony Reese, and Jeff Parrish, thank you guys for being here. We also have Mr. Terry Shelton, the interim city manager for the city of Eden. Thank you for your hospitality and everything that you've made happen here. Deanna Hunt, the city clerk, I appreciate everything that you did to help us get this meeting and have it here tonight. Keith Duncan, former county commissioner, and sits on the Board for Cardinal. Appreciate what you do for the community every day, especially with the, in the mental health field, and still giving back to the county, and so thank you very much. And then my friend Greg Lightback here, the police chief, he, him and, helped make, him and his officers, and of course the sheriff's department, helped make sure we have proper security. So that's all I have. Took me three minutes to thank everybody, so. But I appreciate everybody being here. The youth council, you know, our youth council leads our pledge of allegiance at every one of our meetings, and it's a way of just being involved in that meeting and being involved in that community. And I think it's so important that there's so many things going on that's right with the youth in our community, and you guys are the future leaders of this community, and stepping up now, learning, volunteerism, and giving back to the community is a learned behavior. And the earlier you start it, the more you will receive back. So thank you, thank you for your willingness to serve. With that being said, gentlemen, we're gonna go into a closed session, and it's a laundry list of why we're going into the closed session, but then I'll try to hit them all. We're going into closed session pursuant to GS 143, 318-11A1, approval of closed session minutes. A4, location expansion of industry. A6, discuss personnel. We're also gonna, we got something else we're gonna talk about.
Attorney-client privilege and economic development.
Attorney-client privilege and economic, A3. A3. A bunch of the As and the numbers. Okay, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't know that we'll have anything to report when we come out of closed session. We're gonna step back in the back room, but you're welcome to wait around. Thank you again for being here tonight.